Okay, it is nine thirty and I'd like to call the September twelfth meeting of Athabasca County Council to order. First item of business is the approval of the agenda. Going down the list, items that need to be discussed, item number two point one. Item number four point one. Item number five point two. Five point six, six point one. Seven point two. Eight point one. And all of item eleven. Are there others? Counselor Wall?
I'd like to add five point four and seven point four, please.
Five point four and seven point four, okay. Other items? Counselor Holland?
Thank you, I'd like to add five point one.
Five point one?
Five point two.
Five point two is already on.
Oh, thank you, sorry, didn't circle it. Five point five.
Five point five.
And three point one.
And three point one, okay.
And ten one H. And ten one S.
Ten one H and ten one S.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Other items? So going through the list, Councilmen's. Five point three, okay? We have item number two, item number three. Item number four. It looks like all of item number five, item number six. Item number seven point two. Item seven point four. Eight point one. Ten point one H. Ten point one S. And item number eleven. Counselor Chams?
Um, can I also ten point U?
Ten point U?
And um. I think we should have a look at five point six, please.
All of five is on the agenda.
Oh, sorry.
So we just added ten point one U. Is there someone going to move a motion to? Counselor Minns has moved, we approved the agenda as adopted. Or as amended rather, all those in favor? That item is carried, counselor Capitanic, if just to keep with the rules, if you can use the voice vote.
Sorry, I.
Thank you. Item number three point one, is there an amendment to the minutes? Counselor Holland?
Thank you, um, on page six of the minutes or page ten of the agenda. Council Resolution twenty-three dash four six one. It mentions Collington Trail, where actually the name should be Athabasca Landing Trail. Please, and the second item also on page ten of the agenda regarding this snowmobile presentation. It does not mention the request to use Range Road two fourteen as well.
Just in the summary?
Right.
So to add Range Road two on four in the summary.
Thank you very much, that.
Next, the amendments then are under Resolution twenty-three dash four six one. To change the word Collington Trail to the Athabasca Landing Trail. And under the notes for the delegation to add. Range Road two fourteen as as one of the connections. Any further amendments? Seeing none, Counselor Holland, are you willing to move the? Counselor Holland has moved the minutes as amended? If there's no further discussion on the question of the adoption of the minutes, all those in favor?
Aye.
That is carried nine and zero.
Mister Reeve, if I might.
I I had that at the top of my list and then I just got so excited with the approval of the agenda. So backing up on my agenda at the very beginning, there's a couple of introductions that we would need to make. The directors, Director Ternich and Director Wilkinson would like to introduce some new teammates to members to Athabasca University. Do you guys want to come? Athabasca County? There we go. Welcome.
Morning, everyone. This comes to us as our, well, we'll be appointed as a CPO. And points to us with the vast amount of knowledge and experience and education.
Welcome. Look forward to seeing you here. Thank you for being here. And apologies again for the delay. See, it actually is written right at the top. The first item of business is five point one, Counselor Holland.
Thank you, um, in just reviewing um, the policy itself.
Did you have a motion you wanted to make? Nope. It was Counselor Wallack.
I'd like to make the recommended motion, please.
To approve Policy seventy-five seventy-five. As presented. Discussion, Counselor Holland, do you want to discuss them?
Thank you, um, as mentioned before, I do have concerns with this particular terms of reference. And I noticed that it has exasperated a little bit, my concerns have exasperated a little bit with regards to um, the quorum. Uh, we do have um. Two counselors um, representing the county, however, the quorum. Mentions, we must have three counselors, one from each of the municipal member councils. So again, this. The the concern that I have is that this terms of reference allows a little bit too much power to one committee. And I was questioning whether or not the decisions before they are passed in Ted, are they coming back to the respective councils for discussion?
Other discussion, our CIO, do you want to respond?
Certainly. With respect to clause number three point three. And that is the quorum that Counselor Holland has mentioned. Certainly. With three municipalities being members. It would behoove the committee to ensure there's representatives from all three members at minimum at the particular uh. Meetings. So that was the reason that the committee had developed the terms of reference and had been previously submitted in that format. Uh, with respect to to decisions by the Economic Development Committee. Within their budget, they would be have the authority to make those particular decisions. And I'm not, I'm trying to find the. Uh, so under financial, under clause eight point five, the committee is not empowered to enter into any loans, borrowing leases, rentals, or other financial commitments. But may recommend that one or more of the three partnering municipality councils enter into such agreements. So certainly. I think the committee is acknowledging and sensitive to the fact. There is a limit of powers and the limit is within the budget that's been approved for their operations for the year. So hopefully that addresses those concerns.
I appreciate that, um, however, I know we had discussions just as an example with the community transportation policy that. It was a courtesy that was coming back to councils and before we made any decisions, we would come back to council with that discussion. And I don't see that that same consideration is being made in this particular policy. We were asked to make that change by the by the council. Um, the change was made, but I don't see the same courtesy happening, therefore I cannot um. Support this particular terms of reference.
Other discussion? Seeing none, if you're ready for the question, the question is on the adoption of the motion to adopt the terms of reference. Seventy-five seventy-five as amended, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One, two, three, so we are six and three and the motion is adopted. Policy number five point two. Is relates to policy sixty-one hundred is Councilman's, did you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to place policy sixty-one hundred on uh. On the policy and review agenda at the next meeting. Date, uh, I don't know which. When the date is regarding bullets points twelve and thirteen for better clarification.
So you'd like it on the side of the policy review committee? Okay, I just didn't catch it.
Yeah.
So the Councilman's has made a motion to um, refer. Policy sixty-one hundred to the next policy review committee specifically to discuss bullets number twelve and twelve?
Twelve and thirteen.
Twelve and thirteen. Is there any discussion?
Mister Reeve, uh, may I just ask for clarification? So we're talking about point number twelve on page thirty-eight of the agenda, is that correct?
I have it displayed before my agenda, but I might my page numbers.
Okay, I just wanted to be absolutely certain.
It's uh, it's on page two of the policy.
Okay.
Oh, page four, okay.
So, okay. That's it. Yeah, so this, so the the motion just for clarity is to refer policy sixty-one hundred for discussion at the policy review committee meeting specifically to contemplate. Points number or lines number twelve and thirteen in the policy.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, on the question of the adoption of the motion to refer policy. Sixty-one hundred to the next policy review committee meeting specifically to address bullets number twelve and thirteen, all those in favor?
Aye.
That is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. The next item of business is five point three, Councilman's, you asked for that to be in the agenda.
Yeah, I just wanted to uh. Put it on the agenda, I will uh, make the motion. No, recommended motion. Uh, to improve the funding of. For the Island Lake, Baptiste Lake. Uh, potable water feasibility study.
Councilman's has moved in a council adopt a motion to. Approve the funding of sixty-seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. To as our county contribution to the Island Lake and Baptiste Lake. Potable was water feasibility study. Further discussion?
I guess, uh, and and the main thing I wanted to do is just to. Thank our CIO, interim CIO for very much help of figuring this out. It was uh, it was uh, it was a big deal. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Gerlick? No, that's completely separate. That will be coming up soon, will it? That's completely separate there, there. This is a, this is a study that's being organized by the Summer Village of Island Lake. And we're a participant, you know, broad group with that. The Rochester one is one where we've applied for a grant. Uh, strictly through the county, it being parallel to a grant to work to cast.
Mister Reeve, members counsel, I will have an update on that particular study, the Castlin Rochester one during the CEO council briefing following the regular meeting.
Okay. There's no further discussion on the question of the adoption of the motion to approve funding of sixty-seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars, seventy-three cents. Island and Baptiste Lake potable water feasibility study, all those in favor?
Aye.
That is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Counselor Wallack, snowmobile trail, so you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to approve this um, item with. Pending approval from the or pending confirmation from Alberta Snowmobile Association. That they have authorizations from the Alberta Transportation and Economic Corpsers to maintain and operate snowmobile trails with provincial one, two, and three digital highways right away.
I think Counselor Wallack has made a motion to approve the um. This item, not this item, to approve the proposed route. Subject to approval from Alberta Transportation that the snowmobile club has permission to operate in one, two, and three digit highways. Is that accurate? Hey, discussion, Counselor Holland, your hand is.
Thank you, um, we've had quite a bit of discussion, which was great. Some meeting um, with regards to this, I cannot support at this time. The route that was proposed due to several reasons. Number one, we have not had a public engagement. Two, there are great concerns with safety as Alberta Transportation has identified when you are doing ditch riding. You have slope condition issues, you have um. Safety issues with regards to headlights, you have snowmobiles coming up on the road. There has um, been quite a few studies with regards to that in comparison to several other. Uh, very excellent trails that are out there on existing, you will see that they do not follow the highways, they are actually in the wilderness where people would prefer to do their riding. Um, I do not see that this would be a benefit at all to the county, I see it as being a huge liability. I see that there is a much more uh, areas that we should be looking at. As I mentioned in our tri-council meeting with the report that was given. When we look at public land and creating trails on public land, we look at the Trails Act. And the Trails Act is very specific as to who then on public land would have the um. Authority to maintain the trail, designate the trail, which removes the liability from the county. And I see that this route through county ditches is not only short sighted. Um, but there is a larger picture that we should be looking at and uh. Transit, Alberta Transportation Traffic Act is very clear with regards to the prohibited uh, snowmobile uh. Trails in the in the highway ditches, um, and I cannot support um. Prohibited activity coming into, uh, the only way to get into our county is through prohibited prohibited activity, so I cannot support that motion. I do support that we of course get authorization from Alberta Transportation, but I believe that our county would be doing a disservice by not. Looking into uh, the bigger picture and creating an actual world-class trail.
Counselor Cromwell, you're on deck.
Thank you, when we initially spoke about this, I was concerned about. The possible high numbers of people coming into the counties, it's a new part of trail that they are telling us is going to be very. Popular and. I still believe that. The adjacent landowners need to be consultant and spoken to before this can go through. On top of that, I am concerned and I regret that I didn't have a chance to bring it up, that I didn't think of it in time, that. I have at no point heard any consultation with AHS, local RCMP detachments, even our local emergency services and what extra burden this could put. If we get that huge influx of. Of recreational vehicles coming in during the winter time. And if these trails are as busy as they're talking about, what that will do for local emergency services and the people whose properties will be affected by that noise. Our OHV bylaw, I believe is. Eight AM to ten PM, I I had it there the other day when we spoke, it something around that. But regardless, I I believe we're rushing into this a little too quick and our residents need to be. Consulted before we directly impact. How they choose to live and where they choose to live.
I see you, but we're gonna go around. Um, other comments?
Counselor Chams?
I don't see the problem with taking the time and really looking at that, those big picture items. Um, definitely was a little bit of an eye opener for me getting some of the information that uh. We've had, I don't feel quite ready to move towards an approval at this time.
I think we've talked a lot about, you know, economic development, we've talked about driving tourism and so for me. I think that. Conditioning it to Alberta Transportation's approval, Alberta Transportation has said. That they do have designated trails in provincial highway right of ways. So if we can wait to get there, you know, if these guys can wait to get their approval, I think signaling to them that. We support local groups who take the initiative to drive tourism in our region is important. And it's a chance to put our money where our mouth is in terms of. Whether we are truly committed to that that economic driver that we've talked about. Now, while I would personally prefer to see it done on a trial basis, because the the consultation thing, you're gonna get all kinds of not in my backyard and. And worries, but if you approve it on a trial basis so that you can see how it actually operates, this is a snowmobile trail, it's built with snow, disappears every spring. Um, we can see how it works and. My suspicion is that it won't be as bad as everybody, everybody would imagine that it would be in in the beginning. So I I think um. That it's something we should support and encourage this group that has a long history in the community without serious accidents and problems. To carry on and 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 encourage them to keep uh, keep working and building in our region. If we can't, we can't talk one thing and do another. Now, is there anybody else who would like to speak, Counselor Minns?
I uh, I agree with that, uh, with the trial basis, I still think that we could uh. Ourselves or or the group could could put on a. Open, open forum and and. Talk to people about it. Also at the same time, but uh, showing that that as long as they get approval from transportation, which. Then they're right way, they might be able to and uh. And then going at it as a trial saying for one year. I don't know how a trial would work with them just due to the fact that uh, there would have to be signage and all this other stuff put up, so. That might be a little tricky for them to figure out, but uh. I know under the, under the. The. Out west, where where we have lots of trails, um, they go along the edge of the roadways and stuff like that. And it seems to work out fairly, fairly decent, so. So I think a trial. Trial would be okay.
Are you uh, then seeking to propose the amendment to include the words on a trial basis?
Yeah.
Okay, so Counselor Minns has moved, we amend the main motion to include the words on a trial basis.
On a trial basis.
And I I think that just gives us the flexibility in the end to to say we're testing it, it's not a guarantee for.
Right.
In terms of further discussion from people who haven't spoken, Counselor Gerlick?
Yeah, I feel a little uncomfortable in the fact that they came in here. I mean, it's pretty obvious, if you're going down highways, you should know whether or not you're allowed to do so, not. Coming in at some point and say, well, if we can give permission, they must be doing it at other places, so they must know what the rules and regulations are. It just. Was not a very good presentation as far as I'm concerned. It wasn't showing any respect for the council to to come in, not prepared as it was. I couldn't support it.
The Counselor Capitanic or? Counselor Captain?
I'm in full support of extending this project and. As you mentioned, just echoing your words, a longstanding organization or community, many generations have been a part of the existing network and I'm sure generations to come will continue maintaining them. And I think that anything that we can do to. Up the standard of living in our community is very positive.
Hey, Counselor Anderson, do you want to speak to it this at all?
I really applaud community groups who take the initiative to try and build new. Um, developments within our community and to help. Create those kind of recreational opportunities for our residents and for those who choose to visit our region and. For that reason, uh, and. Due to the um, reputation of this community group, I'm in favor of allowing this to go forward and. Having seen what they can do.
Good, so because we have an amendment, let's go around a second time, Counselor Holland, you're on deck, but the CIO would like floor.
Mister Reeve, members of council, thanks to the research that was done by Counselor Holland. We have located the document. That identifies the process by which municipalities, groups or. Any particular individual may apply to Alberta Transportation for approval of snowmobile trails. Along numbered highways, it was a very interesting document, I'm trying to recall what the name of it is, but I don't have the uh.
The document is referred to as Trails in Alberta Highway Right-of-Way Policy Guidelines and Standards.
So certainly, we are aware that the Alberta Snowmobile Association has followed this process previously in other parts of the province. They would have to follow a similar process in this particular case. And if it was to come through Athabasca County, we would respectfully suggest that we would follow the same. Process procedures and guidelines that the province has in place, because you don't need to reinvent the wheel. So just wanted to add that additional information for your knowledge and benefit, thank you.
Okay, so final loop through and principally, uh, the amendment has been made to include uh, this as a trial. Counselor Holland, you're on deck.
Thank you, um, I appreciate your words, thank you, um, the document that you are referring to though. Uh, we also, as noted in the report that I made, has been um, on as on the website. Uh, that the publication is on has been um, archived. And therefore the Traffic Act is much newer, that document is twenty fifteen, the Traffic Act is twenty twenty-three. So that's where um, my and it was mentioned in the report as well that that document is either outdated or changes have been made to it. And the document also specifies, um, that particular outdated document specifies that municipalities would be the ownership and the liability would fall in the municipality. The municipality would also uh, fall to the maintenance, creation, et cetera, et cetera, and which really creates difficulties. Um, for me in a municipality, when we have, as mentioned in the report, public land that. Goes from Jackfish Lake all the way to grassland, we refer to economic development. Um, the economic development going from Highway six-six-three to Highway eight-twenty-seven is nil. In the county, that economic development does not benefit the county. It may benefit our our neighboring municipalities, but it does not benefit us, it creates more liability. Whereas if we actually looked at going through the public land, which could take you to grassland, take you to wandering river, we are now incorporating true economic development for our hamlets. Um, so I'm confused as to where um, the economic development aspect falls. Uh, we also have not mentioned the feasibility study that Lacklebish is currently doing and they are looking to expand from Smoky Lake. Up to Lacklebish, through to Athabasca, through to Fort McMurray. And without taking that time which they mentioned would be available to us at the end of December, without taking that time to properly look at and plan. Um, I'm finding as once again, I cannot support a trial, we don't have a timeline on that trial, is that something that is going to be discussed? Um, and again, even a trial without discussing this with the public who this impacts severely, uh, I think is is extremely disappointed. And I would be extremely disappointed personally that we don't look at the bigger picture here and see that um. There are way better ways to do this, we're listening to the presentation where these fellows know, I mean, I, they might be doing great grooming out there and 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 whatnot, but like they said, well, nobody said anything. So is that how we as council? Decide that that's how we're going to promote activity here as we know it's prohibited, but nobody says anything, so we're just gonna go ahead. I think we need to hold ourselves to a higher standard than that, and I would be extremely disappointed to see that uh, this council chooses not to look at. The opportunities that we have here with the least amount of liability to us.
Counselor Cromwell, the floor is yours. And again, please. Sticking to the the bylaw, let's keep our comments to the things we haven't already said.
That's fine, I have an amendment that I have prepared. Uh, the amendment, the amendment is once consultation with affected residents. Local emergency services, including local fire departments, Alberta Health Services and local RCMP detachment. Are completed.
Can you put? Say it again slower, once.
So once consultation is done with affected residents. Local emergency services, including local fire departments, Alberta Health Services and local RCMP is complete. So I would like to make sure that those affected ratepayers actually have a voice, that we speak to our emergency services. And that we are taking the time to go through this appropriately, that amendment would then work with on a trial basis that would then work with. Approval pending approval from Alberta Transportation. And that comes right back down to our strat plan and being transparent and making sure we're doing things correctly.
Okay, so Counselor Cromwell has made an amendment to add the words once consultation with affected residents with local emergency services, including fire departments, AHS and RCMP is complete. Um, Counselor. Walk.
Um, the great thing about us now, we have a regional fire chief that we can consult in-house, so I think that would be a first step to look at versus the regional or the local fire departments because we are regional. In terms of economic development, uh, this is huge, we are working with our regional partners, so it'd be selfish selfish as last to take that away from them. This is a huge boost, this is a volunteer committee that's willing to put in the work. And would be a massive increase for us. Put us on the map with the trails and the great thing about trails is we can always expand. There's no, the snow goes away, you can make a new trail next year. So I understand the point of waiting for the study to come through, but that's a great thing is we can just continue to expand with that. Um, so holding up this for the year. I think would um. Not be. Beneficial to anybody. We have an opportunity here with a group that is willing to do the work. Let's take it and let them run with it. Let's take it and let them run with it. Um, in speaking with people that live on that road. People are happy about it. They would be more than happy that go through their place, so, um.
I see.
Yeah. So. That's all I got to say.
If I can speak on the amendment.
No, we're gonna go around once and everybody else has a chance first. Where you've been twice already, Counselor Holland, everybody else will get that opportunity first, and then we'll come back to that.
Well, I'm sorry, I thought with the amendment, we would start that count over again.
Well, if you want to start at zero, but I'm going around one more time. So go ahead, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um. I appreciate the amendment. Um, I have done a little bit of preliminary work there as well with regards to consulting. Um, affected people along the trail and no, they are not in support. They weren't in support in twenty twenty. When this came forward, and this isn't a connection. There is no designated trail between Athabasca and West Baptiste, and there is no designated trail. Between Athabasca and Jackfish Lake, therefore there is no connection. At all. There would be no connection to get to Boyle. There is no connection from. Baptiste Lake back, like I mentioned, to Athabasca, so therefore this isn't, uh, a completion of a trail. And the work, um, that you're referring to has already been done by the county in our right of ways. Uh, therefore there, I don't see, I see this as a very easy way out, rather than, uh. Looking at the big picture and, and giving us what we deserve and then what our riders here deserve and what our public who come. To this community deserve is a world-class trail, and that's not through the ditches in a farming community. With the two heaviest traveled routes in that particular area, two oh four and Paxton. Uh, I, I just, I am so miffed to hear, um, our economic development. Uh, committee speak that this is, um. Something that is a benefit, benefit to our community when it would not be, not in this form.
Other comments? Counselor Captain, you're on deck.
I'll make a quick comment that, uh, I won't support the Second Amendment because I feel it's redundant if we. Support the First Amendment to do this on a trial basis and the community speaks out and or we feel the need to put time and effort. And admin into. All the public consultations that are listed, um, that can be done because it's on a trial basis, so. I don't feel like tying up our, the sec, the First Amendment to this motion. Um, with the second is productive or efficient. Thank you.
Other comments? Councilmen, Council Chamsak. Councilmen.
I guess, uh, uh. This, this community group runs, runs a very good. Very good show. They've, uh, they've increased their membership to like two hundred and seventy-five. Riders and that, and, and, and I know. Even, even around home out west, they were, there was, there was a little bit of pushback when, when. That was a long time ago. There's a little bit of pushback when they first started and, uh, because people didn't know what was gonna happen and. And, uh, it's turned out to be a, a very viable. Uh, trail system and not all, all the way through there and, uh. I think, uh, that's why I'm suggesting. Again, my amendment on, on a trial basis, we can go a year, we can go two years. And, and, and try it and, and, and see what happens if, uh. I think you'll find people will be more than accommodating. And, and that, so. The people that are gonna be coming through, uh, going from Boyle to Athabasca or Athabasca to Boyle. Are, are gonna be travelers. You're not gonna be ones that wanna. Take off through fields and stuff like that, and, uh, the ones that are gonna start taking off through fields and stuff like that are gonna be your. Your, uh, locals there anyway, so. My, my point of view, so it's, uh, and, and they know where they're going, so I think. I'm, I'm all in favor of. They still have to get through to transportation before they can get to our. Our jurisdiction, they have to get down highway, so we'll see what happens there.
Further comments from someone who hasn't spoken, Counselor Gerlick.
Yeah, this. This is just something that just came up. With very short notice. Without really any. Any basic planning, and I don't know what the rush is, why it would have to proceed for this year, why they would not. Try and get the ducks in the row and look at, uh, at other. Other options, because. On, on the one road, they said they're gonna have, there's two or three places where they're gonna have to cross to the other side. Because the, the, the ditch isn't adequate, so they're gonna be crossing, then crossing back, then crossing in two or three places like. To me, it's, this is just, why could it not wait another year and get? Get things actually figured out and, and find out from people how they feel about it to me. And whether like, it's, it's not like this is never gonna happen, maybe just shouldn't happen this year. Get our ducks in the row here, uh, first before we give approval, without even talking to people. That are affected out there. That's. It's, it's, I think it's irresponsible.
Coach Cromwell.
Thank you very much. It is our duty to consult those rapers who we are here to represent. It is our duty to ensure that the public have a voice. Now, a small delay, if that is what happens, that is what happens. There's no offense to that club. I, I take Counselor Min's at his word that they are a good club, they run a good trail. It is however, our duty to check with that person. We, we've said in this room, how many times, well, it's not my backyard. No, it's not your front yard. To have the respect to approach those rapers and go, hey. This is what we're looking at doing. These are the questions you have. Here, your answers are ready for you. To reach out to our local RCMP detachment, to our local volunteer fire departments. Yes, we have a regional fire chief, our fire master plan, that is not all complete. We still have individual fire departments. They still have a voice and their level of service is dependent on each. Uh, station separately, so what they can and cannot handle. We must not take people out of the equation.
For the comments? I. I'm. The, um. You know, when the group was here, they spoke to us about building a spine and ribs, and so. There are, we have, we have a group of volunteers who are willing to put their time and money. Into the development of something that can be amended over time as they develop and progress and improve. And expanded to include the ribs that, that take the, uh, the side trips off to other, other places, so I, I see this as a really. Good first step. Um, I don't support the amendment, the final amendment, because it. To me seems like, um, just a roadblock that, um, is already accomplished by. Creating the trial period for people to experience it and see it, and we can talk to them as that's occurring. You know, we're, we're elected to make decisions and we don't consult on every last decision. The pilot doesn't fly the plane with the Hulk. The whole crew in the cockpit. The trial is good because it's not that forever guaranteed and continuing approval is based on good, solid operation, so I. I, I support the First Amendment and think, I think this is something we, um. Should be supporting. Now, who hasn't spoken, Counselors Anderson, Chamsak? Okay, so on the amendment. To, um. On the question of the adoption of the amendment, to add the language, once consultation after affected residents. Sorry, once consultation has occurred with affected residents, local emergency services, including. Fire departments, AHS and RCMP is complete. All those in favor? Four opposed. Five, the amendment is defeated, four and five. On the question of the amendment to add the words on a trial basis. All those in favor?
Hi.
The, the question has been put, all those in favor? Okay, what are we at? Five? Six, sorry, and opposed? Three, so the, um, the amendment on a trial basis is approved. On the question of the adoption of the main motion. Which I think now reads to approve pending approval of Alberta Transportation. Uh, to operate on one, two and three-digit highways on a trial basis. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? And the count is five and four, and the motion is adopted. Item number five point five is next, and Counselor Holland, you. Put that on. Did you have a motion?
I need, I just need a few moments here to finish these notes.
Is there someone willing to make a motion on five point five, Counselor Anderson?
I'll move the recommended motion.
Counselor Anderson has moved that the council select the twenty twenty-four budget year for the work as it cannot be commenced until later than July of twenty-four. And further that a request for quotes on the removal be brought to the twenty twenty-four budget deliberations. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none? For, Counselor Holland, do.
Thank you. Um, being that there is such a short window for the repairs, I believe it's nine weeks that we can do the work in that area. Um, and it's basically saying now, uh, two plus years. Is the possibility to replace this bridge. Um, my question then would be is if. We had that funding now. As in alone, are we able to complete that work, replace that bridge? In that window on twenty twenty-four?
Sorry, through the chair, Counselor Holland, for clarification, you want to know if we can remove it and replace it in the nine weeks?
Yes.
After speaking to the consultants on the file, I do not believe that that would be an option. It will be at least a year plus the application for this dip funding and when that's approved. From what they're saying timeline-wise, we would not be able to remove and replace in a nine-week period. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, other comments? Seeing none, if you're ready for the question, the question is on the adoption of the motion that council select the twenty twenty-four budget year for work. On the, this is on the Collington Bridge, which. Can we just amend that language for, to include that? Council select the twenty twenty-four budget year for work on Bridge File one, three, eight, three, three. As it cannot be commenced until later than July twenty twenty-four, and further the request for quotes on the removal be brought to the twenty twenty-four budget deliberations. All those in favor?
Hi.
That is nine and zero, and the motion is adopted. Five point six refers to. Speed signs. Is. This is one. Customers, or this is the Skeleton Lake Speed Science, Counselor. Counselor Minz.
I, uh. I'm, I, I thought about it and looked at this quite a bit. I'd like to, uh, make a motion. Uh, to, to change speed limit. To sixty kilometers an hour on Township Road six fifty-four Skeleton Lake Road. Starting fifty meters west of Shadow Lane Estates access. To the Skeleton Lake Boat Launch. And speed limits within the residential subdivision, uh. The second part of that motion, recommended motion, uh, to. To, uh. That the speed limits within the residential subdivision of Shadow Lane Estates, Sunset Villas, Paradise Valley, Pertskova Estates and. Katie's Cove be set at forty kilometers per hour.
So just repeating what I think you said, um, that the council, uh, set the speed limit at sixty kilometers per hour on Township Road six fifty-four. Starting fifty meters. West.
West of Shadow Lane Estates.
Of Shadow Lane Estates. And continuing to the boat launch.
Right.
Correct. Okay, Councilman's has moved that council set the speed limited at sixty kilometers per hour on Township Road sixty-six, five, four. Starting fifty meters west of Shadow Lane Estates and continuing to the boat launch. And further that the speed limits within the residential subdivision of Shadow Lane Estates, Sunset Villa, Paradise Valley, Pertskova Estates, Katie's Cove. Be set at forty kilometers per hour. That, I hear.
You betcha.
Motion, Counselor Chamsak. Floor is yours.
I just think that the decision of the prior motion was made a little bit too fast. Maybe I was a little bit gumshuous. Um. I don't know what, uh, council feels, but I do like the idea of our rural subdivisions in the future. Maybe moving towards a standardized. Speed limit of maybe perhaps forty kilometers, that could be a conversation of another day. I feel that that's a fair. Uh, limit within. Our rural subdivisions. Nice motion.
Counselor, uh, Cromwell.
Thank you, uh, just so that my brain has caught up here. So we're actually increasing the speed limit on that portion of road. That is correct?
With, with the old motion, initially that speed limit on there was eighty kilometers an hour. And then when that first came to, uh, came back to council with regards to the association wanted. Wanted it changed and dropped down to fifty and council agreed with that, which, which. After sitting there thinking about it myself. I remember another road close to this, uh, close to Athabasca that. The same thing happened and was, uh, derated down to fifty kilometers an hour where. There was hardly anybody living and, uh, it was, it was a long stretch to do fifty K. And so I feel the same way that, that. I wish I could have went back to that day and said, no, no, that's, that's too slow, like, you know, and, and, uh, so.
We'll let you just restrict you to answering the question only and then we'll.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments, Counselor, like, are you waving or crafting your knuckles? Okay, Counselor Holland.
Thank you. Um, so this stretch that is currently at fifty is a mile and a half, and when. Going down to the fifty was that knockoff a half a mile or so? Or going to this, a quarter of a mile, so it's. I guess my question is in comparison to other rural subdivisions that I'm seeing the speed zones are fifty. Um, for example, through Century Estates, the main road is, is fifty. Um, I'm confused as to why. Sixty is a request.
Um, other comments? Uh, uh, I was hoping, well, he's made the motion, you've opposed it. I, I, I don't think we want to get into a back and forth debate, but over the. The, um, that's not been our, our standard to debate each other beside each other.
It's, it's not a debate, it's just to ask the reason why the sixty is beneficial.
They spoke to that earlier. But CIO.
Mr. Reeve, member counsel, uh, staff have done a traffic count in that area. And it's fairly significant in the amount of traffic. When the original motion was made back in June. And we reduced the speed lim, limit from eighty to fifty, we have incurred nothing but problems. As you see in the report, signs have been removed numerous times. It's cost us a lot of money. And I've received a number of phone calls from residents in the area. So certainly administration supports increasing it from the fifty to sixty. I think that will satisfy those people who are re, removing the signs illegally. As well as those people have phoned to comment that the fifty was a little bit too slow. And, uh, certainly the direction that council is taking at this time, I think addresses all those particular issues, so. Thank you.
Counselor Holland, the floor is still yours, if you want to have.
Thank you. So I, I guess my, more than anything is, um, there's all this conversation that's taking place is that we have standards. In our subdivision, standards in our hamlets, so I just wonder at what point do we move towards, um. You know, all, all subdivisions and, and their thoroughfares are fifty, or are they now all going to change to sixty, so. I guess I, I understand that this has been a contentious issue in that en, environment out there. Um, you've got two groups, from my understanding, that are kind of, we want it slower, we want it faster. Um, in all and all, I'm looking at the safety aspect of this. If it's high traffic, high, uh, foot traffic. Uh, there's wildlife out there, there's pets out there, uh, a mile and a quarter is not, uh, excessive to ask people to do fifty, but. That's where I'm at with the safety.
Counsel, uh, Counselor Chamsak, you've spoken to this, I'm gonna go to those who haven't. Counselor, uh, Capitanic? Gerlick? No, no, Counselor Anderson? I share the views of some of my colleagues here that, you know, in hindsight, it seems we might have. I share the views of some of my colleagues here that, you know, in hindsight, it seems we might have. Not had quite enough information when we made the first resolution. And I have some reluctance to, you know, making changes when it feels like we're being bullied by criminals. But, um, I have respect for the fact that there's been a lot of feedback from local residents and acknowledging that. I don't, in hindsight, feel like I. Had the information I would want today to make that same decision. I, I support the proposed motion. At sixty and, you know, road safety in my mind is should be based on road design or sorry, road speech should be based on road design and the safety that comes from that. Not based on a one size fits all. And so I, I think we can't have a single circum- single circumstance that applies to all, all designs. Okay, in terms of the, is anybody not spoken that wants to? On the question of the adoption of the motion. Um. We're going, going to go around once and keep moving. Yeah, on the question of the adoption of the motion to set the speeds to sixty kilometers an hour. On Township Road six fifty four, starting fifty meters west of Shadow Lane Estates and continuing through to the boat launch. And additionally, that the speed limits within the residential subdivisions. Of Shadow Lane Estates, Sunset Villa, Paradise Valley, Perch Cove Estates and Katie's Cove be set at forty kilometers per hour. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The count is eight and one. The motion is adopted. The next item on your agenda is. Six point one. Oh, you know what? So we just, uh, on a point of personal convenience, why don't we break till half past ten? My apologies for an hour and let's, uh. Twelfth County Council meeting. We are at item number four point one. And it is a delegation from the Amber Valley Community Association. Welcome and thank you for taking time to come in and talk to us today. Um, we're going to start with introductions and then, uh, then the floor will be yours. So. On, uh. Your right, we have our interim CEO, Mr. Pat Vincent, recording. Secretary Ms. Green, uh, communications, uh, manager coordinator, Mr. Schenkelberg. And then Councilman, it's great, uh, Rob Minz, uh, Counselor Division Eight, uh, Baptiste Lake Island area.
Good morning and welcome. Thank you for being here. Tracy Holland, Division Five, which is Amber Valley, Paxton area, Arcview and Jumping Deer.
Kelly Chamsik, Division Seven, at Warren Grassland, Prospita Areas.
Good morning, Camille Wallach, Division Nine, North of the River.
Good, I'm Brian Hall. We've met outside, Counselor.
Good morning, Joe Grellak, and Councilor Division One.
Good morning, Ashton Anderson. I reside in Division Three, which is out in the Boyle area.
Good morning and welcome, Gary Cromwell, Far North, Wandering River, Brain App, Blue Jay areas. Thank you for being here.
And on the screen, Counselor.
Uh, good morning, Natasha Capitania, Division Two, Collins to New Pine Creek and Minook.
Uh, welcome again. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm Virginia Donald. I'm president of the Amber Valley Community Association. Uh, and we're here on matters that we have with the Amber Valley.
Let's see where the red light is. Good morning, I'm Diane Scoville. I am the treasurer for the Amber Valley Community Association. And, uh, we've been in this position for the past, uh, three years.
Uh, I have sent a letter to the, uh. County, our. Furnace has gone. Completely, uh, the hall was built there nineteen ninety when they put in the, um. Flooring, they put under flooring heating with. Tubing and then just cemented it in. So there's no crawl space. There's no nothing. That has. Worn out and the tubing is all cracked and is no good anymore. Also with our water. I think that might have a lot to do with some of the stuff. It is so much iron in there that it's breaking down our. Toilets, our sinks are that, but we did finally got, uh, uh, funding coming to put in a cistern. And to redo the, the water pipes there, but for our furnace, uh, we have nothing as of soon as it gets cold here. We would have to shut down or something. I don't know. We could not get any grant. We had, uh, a lady from town here. Sent in for a grant from the government and they refused it. So I thought, you know what? Let's just try the county, see if they could help us out somehow. And. So we have, uh, heat there and we've been. Not active for the time through the COVID, so this is why we are. The funding's not there because we missed three years of going to the work, the casinos, which that's most of our funding and our, um. Monthly jams that we have, we had to shut them down. So we have started up when it was able to open, but. The crowd is not there like it used to be yet. I think people are still. Afraid or something that they're not out there. So in order to keep our hall active. Uh, the reason we want to keep it active is because we have the museum. And I think it's important to have the Black History shown and knowing what has been happened in, in the. Past and keep that history going. So this is why I stood up to take the president's place because there was nobody wanting to take it. And, uh, I think that's important for, to have that history going in the, the county. And I'll turn it over to Diane.
Okay, thank you for meeting with us today. And like Virginia said, like since I've been involved with the Amber Valley Hall, it's, it's quite active. And we do a lot of different programs through that hall. Uh, we have. Different fundings coming in, but it's from different programs that we have to spend a funding according to how the government has it structured. So we use the hall. For that purpose. For to, to do everything that we have to do. Like we're involved with the oil sands monitoring, we're involved with the government, with the ECC. We're involved with the wood vines and where we have, we hold our monthly meetings there. We have, um. Um, Alpap, they have their meetings there and we just have, we just recently have internet connection that we could afford to put up a tower. So we do have internet there now. And like Virginia said, we're getting a cistern and the only thing that we're having problem is with heating. And, um. To me, like as a community, like and we're our part of this, of the community is that it's not very often. That we do come to the table like this and ask for any kind of funding. It, you know, if we could, like if industry was still viable and running and making all kinds of money, I'm sure that we could allocate money there, but you know, we're, that's all, that's all going. So. To be a part of the community and we are a big part of the community, I think that. It would be a good idea for us to get a grant. Because it's not a lot of money, like, you know, we're not asking for a, a lot of money to get this going, but it's just to be. To say that we're still a part of the community where we don't have to shut down, where we still can do all of our, all of our events and get things going because I know a lot of. Users that sit around a table do come. At Amber Valley Hall. And, you know, it is a part of history. A big part of history. Thank you. Sure.
I'm sorry, Council, are there any questions? Counselor, uh, Wallach and then. Chamsik.
Has there been any of this investigation on replacing the floor heating?
Yes, we do, we do, we just had actually, who came into investigated, was it through, uh? The health unit, the health unit comes once a year and they do the kitchen.
Uh, replacing the, the.
Anything that has to be replaced like in the kitchen.
But you haven't had a contractor come in to check out?
Yes, we have. Okay, we have contractors coming to check out and. The price was just about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, like to replace everything that we wanted to get done with the hall. Which we couldn't afford. So we figured that if, you know, because we wanted to upgrade the floor, we want to upgrade the bathrooms, we want to upgrade a lot of different things in it. But right now, what's really important is the heating system. And we do have the water system already coming in.
Um, you say that you, you know. Applied for. applied for some grants. Have you applied for the Community Facility Enhancement Program through the government?
I think we have, eh? Yes, I think that's one item that we did apply for.
Okay, so you're still waiting to hear back because we don't.
Just a few questions. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge I I'm a little bit of a history buff myself, so I appreciate having museums and such in our communities. But one of the questions I have is, do you guys have any other quotes? Have you contacted other contractors? And is there any other, I guess, funding streams that you've looked through, such as different grants? That's not through AGLC or anything like that. Do you guys have an active person in search of those grants?
Yes, we do. We do have an active person in search of these grants. And when we did do the grants, like it was a tutorial grant, like he did hire a consultant that actually came out and looked at the building and everything that we needed. That's why the grant was like seven hundred fifty thousand, which we will refuse. And so then I think that he did apply for the grant for the heating system also.
Yes.
But we haven't heard anything on that. And you know, it's getting to be closer to winter, so I don't even know if that's gonna be.
Do you know when the submissions were due for that grant that maybe there was a follow up or something like that?
I know the seven hundred fifty thousand dollar one we were refused.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Holland, since you moved around the table, let's.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation and I sympathize. It's it's not easy to try and build these these older buildings up and running. When you mentioned the the grant you haven't heard back from, i- is there a due date that you know of that you will hear back from them?
Well, when you work with the government, I don't, I don't know if there's any due date. If you're successful or not, all they give you is a deadline, right?
Yep.
And then, you know, you wait two, three, four months, sometimes that, sometimes a year before you get an answer on anything.
Right. Do you know what the deadline date was on that one? I think it was for the end of September.
The end of September was the one that you applied for. Okay. And I don't know if this is even possible or anything of that. Did you consider a loan at all?
We have, we have talked about it like through our consult table alone and like we don't get a lot of funds from the casinos and most of that money that we get from the casinos has to keep our lights on and our heat on like during the winter and whatever. So that takes up everything there. Okay, you know, and if we were to get a loan, how would we repay it?
Right.
That's a big thing, but we did think about a loan.
Okay.
As something that we did, and that's something that we did talk about the table. And if we can't get any source of funding, probably in the middle of October, then that's another avenue that we might just have to go down and figure out a way.
Okay. And and you're, of course, applying for the county community hall assistance and and whatnot there too. Okay, no, I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Councilmen, do you have any questions or follow up?
I'm just wondering, are you thinking of getting more quotes on on for the possible replacement of of the heating or?
Or we had put out for quotes, but the only one that came in is the Wild Rose Heating. And other than that, there was no quotes to replace it because it's a boiler system. And I think people don't want to. I don't know. They said with the boiler system, it's not really the, so it all have to be removed and all that. And so the quotes were out there. There was feedwork out and no answers back. We did get two for the water system. And they're both local, but the one was, I think, six thousand dollars higher. So actually, it was the, we sit on the the board for the Athabasca Landing Matee. And they rent the hall when they have a function there and they're the ones that stepped up and said they would pay to get the water put in for us so that we can get the cistern in and and change everything so we could have proper water. And but they don't have the funding to do within the system for the heat. So but the only quote that we did get was Wild Rose Heating from Athabasca.
Counselor Cromwell, do you have any any follow up or clarifications that you'd like to hear?
I do. Thank you. Are you considering reaching out for more quotes? You know, with with any level of government, you generally need more than one quote in order to proceed anywhere. And then just for clarification, you have zero dollars that you can put into this project as of since right now. Is that correct?
Right now, we have really zero dollars because what's left in we have to pay the heat and the the power and that takes up our casino account, I believe, is little over eleven thousand dollars in there. So that's gonna take the whole be gone for the whole year for the heating net. In our general account, we have oh, how many? Thirteen thousand and we've not really been making, we're kind of breaking even with the our jams that we have with the rentals. You know, we have to, so it's not much there too. And we thought we better keep a little bit on hand. You never know what if we run out of our casino and we're not going back to the casino now until next the third quarter of next year. So that's gonna take a while and we still need to pay the bills.
Okay, thanks. So just for clarification, you will try and reach out for some more quotes on that project, but that sums up what I need. Thank you very much.
So I'd like to also speak on that. And so when Virginia was talking about a supply, we do have a consultant that we're always in contact with. And he's aware of the building and whatever, whenever there's anything available that he thinks that would work for the for the hall, he will put out, you know, he will put out a proposal. You know, it's what we need. And when we're talking about, like what Virginia is talking about, the monies that we have available. And like even if we don't get the full amount that we're asking for, if you say, okay, you come back to us and say the most that we could give you on this is forty thousand, whatever, like, you know what I mean? That's forty thousand more that we don't have. And at that point, you know, you're not borrowing that much money from from the from the witch call, from the banks to pay that back, which something like that would be manageable. So there's always ways that we could work with, that we could get this done.
Counselor Capitanic, did you have any questions or follow ups, clarifications? Counselor Anderson.
Do you happen to know the names of the grants that you applied for specifically for the heating system?
I don't have them offhand, but I could get them for you. The the other, like every place that we applied for. And and I did want to say the consultant that we have, it's not for Amber Valley. It's through the Athabasca Landing Matee and he's just working with us to try and get it going because they did sign an MOU between them to work together. And we thought we have our meetings there. If we can help and have a little bit of extra funding, then we could help do some of the repairs.
Thank you. The grants that you've applied for, are they for full funding or are they partial funding, like where the group will have to provide?
Full funding because we don't have to match it. We could do that in labor, but we don't have the match, the funding to match.
Thank you.
Floor is yours. Okay, so without his microphone, he said he doesn't have any questions to ask. I, I mean, I had, I guess, wanted to clarify, do you envision the request that you're asking, which is, you know, fairly substantial maintenance request? Is this a loan or a gift? Like, what's your, what's your vision of? Because we see sometimes other organizations come to municipalities saying we we need help, but we want to, it it's a bridge. So is this just what I'm clear? This is a, are you looking for a gift or a loan from the county?
I would think it would be a gift. Like, I'm not too sure. I'm not too familiar. Don't keep up with the county, but I know that like every year, there's a certain amount of money that you guys do allocate to out to the to the communities and there's certain grants that people can apply for through them, the different organizations. So to me, it would be a grant that we're going to be applying for. You know, and like I said, and if it's not the full amount, if this is, you know, this is something that, okay, like we only have this certain amount left in the budget because we've already allocated so much money to different communities. That's fine with us. You know, just as long as we have a starting point of somewheres that we could work with. That would be great.
Do you know what type of pipes you have in there? Like what the what?
The underground?
Yeah, what's what's the plastic?
I don't.
Some kind of plastic.
Okay, I don't know.
Um, so that, you know, one of the things our council spent a lot of time talking about over, you know, discussing is this idea of future planning and setting up reserves for known and unknown future repairs. And from, you know, reading the letter, I guess the question that came up for me before the meeting was, we're working on these plans and ideas for the things that, you know, a a person would would reasonably foresee as coming up. What other planning has the the association done? And you've told us about the savings that are in place, so we don't really need that. But what planning have you done for other components of the property that are going to need repair and replacement in the in the future? Like, is your roof ten years from replacing? Is it twenty years? What's holding envelope like?
The roof we had done not that many years ago and we put all tin roof so that it wouldn't have to be replaced and we thought it would be better to have the tin roof. And we're just trying to keep the hall open for people that want to rent. Sometimes in the summertime, we do rent it for weddings and reunions often, but like COVID really took us down because we had to close for so long. We couldn't work the casinos. There was no fundraising for three years that really took us down. So it's just trying to get back and we did not know that the heater and the water would go at the same time. But the heating now, we can't put it under the floor again. It has to be a different setup. So it's got to be radiators along the wall because there's no way you can access under that hall. And we even questioned at the meeting, is it worth fixing? Is it, should we start from new again? Because with the water gone, with the heating gone, a lot of stuff is getting obsolete and it was just farmers that built it when they put it together. Like it was not contractors that do that back then. So there's a lot of things that is not working properly are lights. We're gonna have to change. We can't get the balances for our fluorescent lights. There's nowhere we can find them. Things like that. So we questioned it, but then we thought, you know what, in order to stay going, we have to get a fix right away. And if we couldn't get the big one that we wanted to read, like do everything. So we thought, let's just get the heat going so that it it doesn't go down.
So I think the Amber Valley is on the community hall assistance grant list. And so it, I mean, unless you're not applying for it, I think it's half of your utilities get repaid.
Yeah.
So that's one thing you
Yes.
If you're not asking for, you definitely should be.
Yeah.
Thanks for for the comments and the information. Did you? Is there any further questions from council or councilor? Has has one now? When you do the casinos, is there sort of a ballpark for you that that you look at for revenue?
We get around between thirty to thirty six thousand.
Well, so that's a
Yeah. Yeah.
And secondly, you're not talking about radiators in there. You're, it's a forced air system you want me to put in? Because it talks about air conditioning with it?
No, not the air.
No.
But we have seen it. And it is.
Yeah, it's forced air, I think, but it does have air conditioning component.
On page twenty four for clarification, page twenty four of your agenda, we get to quote and it does have air conditioning. Yeah.
So there wouldn't be any radiators or anything like that? There is air conditioning there now?
Yes, we have air conditioning in the hall. It was put in a couple of years ago.
Oh, because doesn't the quote say furnaces with air conditioning? So so if you already have air conditioning, that's something that could be eliminated and 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 reduce that. That bit, I would think. Just for the benefit of our discussion, could you just clarify how much actually are you looking for? The the quote is just eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah.
Okay. So Wallack had a question. Counselor, any follow ups for your? So the the process, I appreciate you answering the question. CEO has a There you go. Sorry, I've been, because Captain, the floor is yours.
I'm sorry about that. I would be interested to see a quote that didn't include a new air conditioning system. Before making a decision.
Okay, is that something that can be provided?
Yeah, I'm not too sure, like I have furnace in my house, whatever, but I'm not too sure, like when you're putting in a furnace, if you have that option to put the air conditioning in it as well when you do it. So now we're saying we have an air conditioning, right? But that's what the furnace that we have now. So I'm thinking that if we're going to be replacing everything, then imagine that the air conditioner will be also replaced if that's part of the furnace. That's all that I'm, it's all in my mind. That's what I'm thinking of.
Counselor Walk.
Okay, so to clarify, you have an air conditioner with forced air right now and a furnace with forced air right now?
It's underfloor heating?
Yeah, okay. Well, you just said you have a furnace with.
And then we have an air conditioner where they have the pots like at the top of the hall to have the air come down from there.
So I just, I guess if you already have the ducting system, that's also a question in the in the quote.
Yeah. So I think that when he probably put this quote together, he was probably probably connecting the air conditioning to what's already existing. That's already there. That's what I'm thinking. But we could get more clarification if you need.
I know it's not an easy thing to come sit in front of a group of people and be grilled with questions. I appreciate you doing that. You've handled that well. And you know, the community halls are important in the region and thank you for serving on the board and for taking time to come talk to us today. And we'll let you.
Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Before we leave, before we leave, we would just like to know, okay, there was one that wanted, you wanted a different quote, right? And we want to know if.
We'll, 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 counsel, the county administration will follow up with you after the meeting.
Okay.
And with any specific questions or or asks from council.
Okay.
Just so that we'll, just to make that easy, because this will come up later in the meeting for for a discussion among council. And there may be other thoughts or questions and and so I'll I'll speak for us and say, I'm sure that it will direct administration to follow up with you and give you some clarification on those items.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for meeting with us.
The next item on your agenda is on page seventy seven and it is item number six point one. Does anybody need a five minute break? Sure. If not.
Yeah.
Counselor Cromwell, that works for me. Take five. Councilor, that works for me. Take five. It's five minutes after eleven. I'd like to reconvene the September twelfth council meeting. We're at item number six point one on page seventy-seven of your agenda. This is bylaw zero one zero two zero two three. Is anyone willing to move third reading? Councilor Anderson has moved third reading, discussion. Councilor Holland.
Thank you. Um, the wording that was removed from the byline in our agenda, I'm a bit concerned. We had in our last council meeting motion CC two, three, four, six, nine, uh, August thirty-first, where it said to remove the words which may be determined by secret ballot in section seven point six. That motion was defeated six-three. So I'm wondering how that applies to the words that are missing currently in this this one?
Mr. Ree, members of council, I can confess, an old dog can learn new tricks. So after second reading was given, we had the discussion with regards to uh, a secret ballot to elected deputy Reeve. I consulted with Kelsey Becker Brooks, our municipal solicitor from Reynolds, Mirth, Richards, and Farmers. And in a cor- uh, email she sent back to me on September sixth of uh twenty twenty-three, she pointed out that the uh given section one eighty-five, one of the MGA only refers to a vote by secret ballot being permitted to appoint the chief elected officer, and then only if requested by council president at the meeting and confirmed by the resolution of council. Councillors are permitted to vote in secret. Is the exception to the general rule that council meetings are public so that public can see how individual councils vote, even if it's not recorded. And no motions can be passed in camera, of course, unless that motion's come out of camera. So therefore, this section of the Act ought to be interpreted narrowly. I do not think a motion can be passed or a rule included in a procedural bylaw which provides for voting by secret ballot for the deputy chief elected official or any other can uh count uh council decision for that matter. So despite my many years of experience and the practice in other municipalities, what they have been doing does not follow neither the rule or the spirit of the legislation. So those words need to be removed from the procedural bylaw. Also, she wa- went on to say that including the words by as voting by secret ballot uh, for the elected official, her opinion was I believe municipal affairs takes the position the process set out in section one eighty-five, one ought to be followed every time as opposed to adopting a set process in a procedural bylaw. So based on her advice, it would be appropriate that neither of the positions include any further clarification because it's already set out in section one eighty-five of the Municipal Government Act. Therefore, I bring forward with her recommendations those changes.
Follow-up, Councilor Holland?
Um. I'm still, I guess, trying to get my head. That's a lot of information. Just trying to get my head wrapped around it because I did notice that um, the establishment and functions in section one forty-five of council committees and other bodies, the council may pass bylaws in relation to those. So I'm assuming when we're creating a a body, would a deputy Reeve be considered as a body?
Uh, that is the interpretation that the uh, solicitor has given us. That she said, I do not think a motion can be passed or a rule included in the procedural bylaw that provides for voting by secret ballot for the deputy chief elected official. So I believe that it'd be her interpretation that that would be the case.
Okay, so we can leave those words in?
No, we can't.
Yeah.
We can't. You can't pass a bylaw that's contrary to the MGA.
But the MGA only refers to the chief elected official, not the deputy.
That is correct. That's the narrow interpretation, whereas other municipalities have unilaterally and on their own, maybe without legal councils' uh acknowledgement or approval have done so by practice. But they are acting outside the scope of their legal jurisdiction.
Okay.
And I've talked to some of my colleagues where I practiced before and brought that to their attention as well, so.
Awesome. Thanks, you guys, because it's been decades.
As I said, an old dog can still learn new tricks.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that information.
Any further discussion on the third reading of the bylaw as amended? Seeing none, if you're ready for the question, the question is on the adoption of uh, third reading of bylaw zero one zero two zero two three, third and final reading as amended, all those in favor?
Aye.
And there are none opposed, there's nine and zero, and the bylaw is adopted as amended. Seven point two.
Revolve, sorry. Just wondering if 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 we could have a reconsideration on a the amended motion with the uh, the trails motion that I, or amended motion that I made regarding the timeline uh, for the trial, if we could add on possibly a timeline onto that motion?
So, uh, councillor Minns has moved for reconsideration of a motion number. Uh, Ms. Green, can you? Do you have a motion number? Of the motion relating to uh, item number five point four on our agenda? So we'll, we'll. And on the one after that?
Five oh eight would be the motion.
So our council means is move for reconsideration of motion five, sorry, five oh eight. Wait. Um, which really probably that's the main motion. So which it probably really needs to be the main motion, but whichever one of those, five oh eight or five oh nine, five oh nine. To consider um adding timelines. So after any matter uh has been decided in any member that voted in the affirmative, may at any time prior to the end of the meeting, may move for reconsideration within the same meeting. No discussion on the question that has been decided is allowed until a motion for reconsideration is carried. Such a motion for reconsideration requires a two-thirds vote of the members present. So on the question of the adoption of the motion for reconsideration of the um, motion related to item five point four, which we think is number five oh nine, all those in favor? Five opposed. The motion is defeated, and we will not reconsider. On to item seven point two, speed signs. That's page number ninety-two of your agenda. This is one where um, there are sort of three distinct propositions in this, and with the councils indulgence, I I it's my opinion that a discussion in advance of making motions may make sense because there are three kind of things on the go. Councilor Capitonic, your hand is up, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. I was going to suggest, yes, those be three separate topics, so thank you for that. Um, would you like to go in order? Of the topic.
The floor, why don't you speak?
Okay, I'm just going to speak on behalf of the residents who signed the unofficial petition to lower the speed limit to forty kilometers an hour within the hamlet of Collington on Crescent Range Road two, three, two. Um, I think that um it is very reasonable. There is a lot of foot traffic um, in the summer, bicycles, dogs, people walking, coming off the trail, coming off the bridge on the Athabasca Landing Trail. And I don't think it's an unreasonable request. I drove the road at forty, and it was very pleasant. Uh, it did not feel like it was too slow. I do want to point out, though, um, whether council decides to uh, lower the speed limit or keep it at fifty, that there is no posting anywhere. So posting of that speed limit would be the number one priority. And I hope that this council will agree that we need to say yes to having speed science on these roads. Thank you.
So shall we just do a quick loop on the 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 segment that relates to Collington first? Any other comments on that? And it, Councilor Anderson?
Thanks. Um, if we are to lower the speed limit on Range Road two, three, two, would it also make sense to have the same speed limit posted for McNabb Road at the same time, being that those are that similar kind of area? And just to keep it more uniform throughout that specific area?
And I think it's actually two, two, three, not two, three, two.
Yeah, sorry, I'm reading the sheet, but yes, it's.
I, I think there's a, just for everybody, I think there's an error on the uh first bullet of the discussion. It should be road two, two, three, not two, three, two.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Chairman Council, I apologize. I wanted to um give respect for the person who dropped the petition off and had written the Range Road number on it, and that's why we provided the map as well, so.
All good. Um, councillor Minns, were you waving or councillor Chan? Nope. Anybody else want to? Okay. So we can, councillor Holland?
Sorry, um, I apologize. So just for clarity, two, three, two is where?
This one right here. Well, two, three, two is somewhere far away.
It is what?
It's it's west by six miles, ten miles.
Two, three.
Ten miles west.
Because the one, if you're coming off the Athabasca Landing Trail, that's two, two, three.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we're, we're correcting it to two, two, three.
Two, two, three. Okay, so we're not talking through.
No, like, this section through.
This is page uh, fifty, ninety-five, so on the map, it's two, two, three, actually. Okay, just for confirmation.
The note is that it's incorrect on our or we suspect the intention that it was, is it, it's two, two, three, councillor Walk.
Do we have anything in our villages and subdivisions? I think councillor Chantek might have brought this up earlier, but a standardization of what the speed limits are?
Director Willey?
Uh, according to your traffic bylaw, the rates of speeds are set in there. Um, it's a, no person shall operate a vehicle on a highway at a greater speed than fifty kilometers per hour in any residential subdivision of the county, except as provided in Schedule A of the bylaw. It's not included in that portion.
So by default?
It is fifty.
And and this is, like, when I looked at the 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 map book, this section is already inside the helmet, so right now, it's fair to think the speed limit is fifty. We just don't have signs on it telling people it's fifty.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Um, so we can, let's sort this one out. Councillor Capitanic, do you want to make a motion related to the first item? Just to assign it or to lower it or?
Um, yes, I would like to make the uh, recommended motion, which is that council assigns speeds of forty kilometers an hour to the Collington Crescent, including lower McNabb and Range Road two, two, three, um, and place the limit signs of forty kilometers per hour um, as um the director sees fit.
So councillor Capitanic has moved that council assigned speed limits of forty kilometers per hour to um the portions of Range Road two, two, three within the hamlet and the road known as McNabb Road. And and signs it appropriate. Is that fair? Any further discussion on the motion, councillor Holland?
Thank you. Um, being that they, we do have the petition and whatnot, but again, we made that real quick decision for Skeleton uh, lake, and now we're reversing and making changes there. So I'm I'm wondering, um, are we going to end up with the same issue? We have a lot of problems with traffic right now on the landing trail um, that this leads to. So I'm just wondering, you know, is this something that is worthy of taking a bit more time as well to ensure that, you know, maybe we do it in a trial. I don't know, but to ensure that we're not going to run into the same issues that we had at that skeleton.
Councillor Minns?
I think uh possibly we should be uh looking at our bylaw and uh I did some extensive driving yesterday around Baptiste Lake, and just to get my head wrapped around the speed limits and that, and and uh most of the subdivisions that I drove through are, they're either at forty, and the ones that are at fifty should be at forty because there's, I tried to do fifty, and there was no way I could, I could do it. So maybe we should be looking at at our our bylaw regarding the traffic. maybe we should be looking at our bylaw regarding the traffic, speed limits and and possibly switching. Dropping it from fifty and forty in our subdivisions.
So this problem sounds like a good idea to come back to another meeting. On the specifics of this motion, does that mean you're thinking just sign it as it's currently regulated or go to forty here and then we discuss it later?
Yeah, go to forty here and rediscover it later.
Okay, so we, as a takeaway, you'll send a policy or committee the whole or something.
You that you. Do you want me to do an amendment to the to the to the motion right now?
I think you just do a request into committee the whole to 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 discuss this, that that broad issue.
Okay.
Is probably reasonable. Okay, other discussion, there's a motion on the floor to to lower the speed limit on the portion of Range Road two, two, certain, yeah, Range Road two, two, three, within the Hammond of Collington. And on McNabb Road and to sign it appropriately, is there? Given there's no further discussion on the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
It is nine and zero and that is adopted. The second part of this, the second bullet on the front page relates to the road through around on the west side of Baptiste between the summer villages of West and South Baptiste. Councillor Minns, do you want to share a bit of background before we? Do anything?
Like you said, share background or or I myself, I'd like to throw a motion out there that we we put fifty kilometer an hour speed limit signs up in the area that suggested for what was it? The the pedestrian signs? I would rather see fifty kilometer an hour signs go there. Due to the facet around the lake. So so I'd like to make a motion and we place fifty kilometer an hour signs at each end of at the at the north end of Summer Village of South Baptiste and at the south end of Summer Village of West Baptiste. To be installed.
Good. So council means has moved that council assign a speed limit of fifty kilometers an hour for the section of County roadway between the north end of the Summer Village of South Baptiste and the south end of the Summer Village of West Baptiste and sign it appropriately.
Yeah, that's a type where councillor.
So am I correct to thinking that these signs just are not there right now?
Do you want to respond?
Yes, there's no, as I drove around the lake yesterday, there's no signs at these locations. And I think it's just presumed that it's sixty kilometers an hour. And so that's the first thing we need to do is actually put the signs up and at the north end of the lake from no, no.
North end of your Summer Village of West Baptiste.
Yeah, north end of Summer Village of West Baptiste, all the way over, going north to the to the entrance into White goal. At the north end is fifty kilometers an hour. So my thinking would be to keep Ryland's area. When we're talking about at fifty kilometers an hour, because when you go around the the whole lake, when you're going through the summer villages, you're at forty, both summer villages on south end and and the west side is at forty. When you drive into White goal, it's forty. There's one spot in there that's fifteen. There's a fifteen kilometer hour sign going into a to a cul-de-sac, which a question. Pack Beach is is fifty, which which actually wouldn't hurt to drop down to forty because you can't do fifty. And or you can, but yeah. You're using it as your own risk and then going into Poplar Point, the main drag going in is is off of the Whispering Hills Road. Is fifty kilometers an hour. My suggestion would be to knock that other one down to forty, once you get into the subdivision.
Are you trying, so you trying to add that to the motion or do you want to do that?
I'm just throwing out where I went yesterday. So so on that note, that's why I want to keep it at fifty.
Just to make it consistent around the lake.
Yeah, long winded.
Councillor Holland.
Thank you. The watch for pedestrians on roadway signs. I guess the question would be if we erect a fifty kilometer sign, can we add on beneath the fifty kilometer sign to please watch for pedestrians? Then I would like to put, is there a motion on the table?
There is.
Then I would like a friendly amendment to also include those. Watch for pedestrians on the roadway under the speed. Can you want you want flashing lights to quit? No, friendly, friendly amendment. Would just be to add that that extra caution cautionary sign.
Is there anyone at the table who would object to just including that wording? Into the motion? Okay, so is there any further discussion? So the the question is on the adoption of the motion to assign a speed limit of fifty kilometers per hour on the section of County roadway between the north end of the Summer Village of South Baptiste. And the south end of the Summer Village of West Baptiste and to include watch for pedestrian signage. Being posted as well. All those in favor? And that's nine and zero and that is adopted. The third piece in here is a request from councillor Gerlick to reduce the speed on the hill on the east side of Rochester into the down the hill from fifty to thirty. Any discussion or councillor Gerlick, do you want to provide some background on that?
If we were to drive it, it would be self explanatory. It's it's just way too fast for that. For that road, you know, thirty, thirty-five, thirty-five is the max. So if it's posted thirty people going thirty-five. It's it doesn't do anything for local traffic, but when someone's new to the area and they come down there, they they need to be forewarned. Speed limits are on that. So I think so. I think it's a proper decision to change it and scale it down.
Councillor Minns?
I I I know that road very well and 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 I agree that the the posted speed limit needs to be dropped. There's no way you can do that at fifty, but there again, I think we need to really look at where we're we're replacing these speed signs. I think forty would be a better better s- speed limit sign to put there just due to the fact that thirty should be more around playgrounds and and places like that. I I don't want to start. There again, back in White goal, we got a fifteen kilometer an hour speed limit and like, there's nobody that's going to do fifteen K. And who's going to police it? Even um. I would rather see it go to a forty and then and then I don't know if there's a sign prior to that that says steep hill or windy road or Rochester Groot Road. I I I don't know if that would be a maybe a more warning of of coming up there, not just a speed limit, but also a windy road sign or or something. But I I don't want to really start crossing into the thirty kilometer hour zones that 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 take it away from our our playgrounds. And then schools, school grounds and stuff like that. That would be my suggestion.
Other conversation councillor Cromwell.
Question for the director through the chair. When we do change a speed limit in the county, do we automatically put up the new? You know, that colorful, hey, pay attention, we've changed your speed limit, or do we just install a new speed limit sign?
From what I've been able to, sorry, through the chair to councillor Cromwell, from what I've been able to gather historically. If it is a speed sign change where one sign is pulled out and a new one is put in, then we attempt to put up new speed zone. When we are doing, as we have discussed, there are multiple areas that just don't have signs. We just put them up.
Okay. Oh. So. No, that's sorry, my brain.
Well, you had the floors, make sure. I don't know if there's appropriate warning signs there or not, but I mean, to me, that's probably just fifty ahead. Yeah, that to me the from my driving that road, you know, you're responsible for the care and controlling the car and driving to road conditions. I I think the best bang for the buck is to warn people about what's coming, not just drop the speed limit. And so forty, fifty, I agree, if you drove fifty down there, you it would be, you know, to the detriment of your car and possibly your own life. So to, you know, but warning signs about the the type of curves and the steep grade probably are more valuable and and maybe a small reduction, but fifty is fifty is a maximum. It's not a, it's not the target councillor. So I I'd be like I'd be happy to see the warning signs and and some thirty to me just it's so easy to roll up a little bit over that and I don't want to be in a spot where I'm coming through there one day on the the little straightaway and you rolled a thirty-seven and before slowing down again and end up with a fine. Councillor Chantek.
I tend to agree with some of the com- com- uh, comments and sentiments made about playground zones, so on and so forth. But if I'm not mistaken, this is a world that you and I have traveled down. That's very interesting. I am a hundred percent in favor of a reduction in speed. Would you be interested in entertaining the thought of a forty kilometer?
Councillor Capitanic, sorry, we need a little buzzer or something that the floor is yours.
It's okay. I don't, I'll get to it. I'm on the Zoom. I expect to be at the end. I'm in support of whatever the councillor for Division One requests. That road, I pleasantly got to ride for nine years on my school bus route twice a day. And I'm sure going down at my old bus driver gene probably didn't do more than twenty, but that was with an, you know, big old bus and winter. I think the big concern on that road is winter. There's just, and when there's freezing thaw. I I mean, I'm remembering back to being a child, but I remember like the bus sliding and going back and forth because those corners would get so icy and to to not to be in any way disrespectful to our county crew that maintain this just a very, very steep and windy road with a lot of runoff. So Mr. Gerlock, if you're requesting thirty, I'm in support of it. And if you change that number, I'll support whatever you request.
I could respond, trying to make a motion.
I'm still on. First of all, I just asked for a speed reduction on the hill. I didn't stipulate a number and the maintenance, what is Roy's position exactly?
Public Works Manager.
Public Works Manager suggested thirty. And thirty is less than fifty, so I was happy. I don't, I think it's really irrelevant whether it's thirty or thirty-five or or where, because people are going to travel it at a at whatever speed they think is safe. But again, it's for people that don't know, and I think it would be more prudent to err on the side of 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 safety because some of those corners are very treacherous in the winter. And if you're doing thirty-five or forty, that's just too fast. Because we have winter half of the year and half of the year. Forty is too fast. In the summertime, it's just fine, but that's, I I don't think anybody's ever going to get a ticket for doing thirty-seven on there. There isn't anybody that's going to. First of all, they won't be able to see him long enough because there's so many corners, so they won't get the reader gun open time. So I don't think that's even a consideration. It's just people will drive it at thirty-five or thirty-seven or whatever they think is comfortable, but just to let people know and they should be cautious because, like I said, it's winter half of the year. That was exactly the points I wanted to make that councillor Capitanic made. So I mean, I'm fine with any kind of a speed reduction. I think thirty was is fine. Because it will make it safer. I'm done.
Do you want?
Or should I make a motion?
You can unless cuts of customer into and add anything before you he makes motion.
I was thinking I have to make a motion.
Do you want him to make it?
I I think you should.
I'd like to see the speed reduction down to motion for speed reduction down to forty kilometers an hour. With also a warning sign put prior to the speed reduction regarding caution windy road, steep hill. Sort of, you guys can figure out verbiage. But yeah. So.
So councillor Minns has made a motion to assign a speed limit of forty kilometers an hour on Township Road six, two, three. Between you know, that street danger. What's the street name there? You want it from down before we stop or from here?
Right to the three we start because that pave version is really good. And so all of a sudden they're coming off that and hit that paperwork and away they go.
So to assign a forty kilometer speed zone on Township Road six, twenty-three from Range Road two, forty point two and east until the crest of the hill.
Yeah.
They are just writing it down. And then to to also add warning signs reflecting the the hazard ahead or to add appropriate warning signs to the roadway in that area outside. Just a second. Okay, sorry councillor Gerlick.
I do appreciate that motion councillor Minns, but I would like to move an amendment that sign be reduced to thirty kilometers an hour.
Hey, so reading the motions, councillor Minns has moved that the council assign a speed limit of forty kilometers an hour from to Township six, twenty-three, beginning at Range Road two, forty point two and east to the crest of the hill. And to add appropriate warning signs to the roadway. Councillor Gerlick has moved an amendment to delete the word forty and replace it with thirty. Is there any further discussion required or do we just want to juggle on? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of the amendment to replace the word forty with thirty, all those in favor?
Aye.
That is opposed. That is seven and two. The motion is adopted. On the question of the adoption of the main motion to assign a speed limit of thirty kilometers an hour. The to Township Road six, twenty-three, beginning at Range Road two, forty point two until at east to the crest of the hill and to add appropriate warning signs to the roadway, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the question is adopted with the count of nine and zero. That was longer. Funding request seven point four. Councillor Wallack, do you want to, you added that? Do you want to?
Councillor Capitanic has.
Councillor Wallack can go.
Right.
She added it. I'm going to speak to it.
I don't know if I'm ready to move a motion though, but I I would like to recommend that they come back with an updated quote. For us.
Councillor Capitanic, floor is yours.
I'd like to move the recommended motion to take this to Budget and Finance. And to speak to that motion, I believe we'd all like a little more information and that will give some time for that to be collected. And in that time as well, just to really spend some time considering what council priorities are for preservation of history. Upon hearing from the committee speaking and and looking deeper into what Amber Valley Hall really is, it's it is much more than a hall. And so I think it deserves a little bit more time and consideration for this request. It does house a museum and we need to be very careful that we consider what the hall being closed would mean to those who utilize and or support that museum and or if that museum would need to be moved, weather dependent. These are all questions and information I'm sure that we could have gathered by the next budget and finance meeting.
Councillor Capitanic has moved to forward this item to the next Budget and Finance Committee meeting for consideration. Just councillor Holland, you have the floor.
Thank you, and I appreciate your words. Councillor Capitanic, I think it's very important that we consider.
Consider um helping Amber Valley, of course, because of the um. Importance of this uh particular building and the location and what it means um to our communities. We have in pillar three of our strategic plan to work with volunteers to ensure that community halls remain viable. And I think that's extremely important. Um, and this gave me a really good opportunity, of course, to do some more research into this where I did happen to find. Uh, back in June ninth of twenty fifteen, uh where, for example, the Colton Community Center. Um, came and asked for help with their uh HVAC uh and whatnot, and the county did offer a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. But again, uh within this particular search, I got finally confirmed. That it mentions in our minutes that the Athabasca County does own the Colton Community Center. So I don't know if that. Decision to offer a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the community club in Collington was because um of that asset being actually a. A county owned building. And in the meantime, we also offered, you know, to Collington, there was eleven thousand dollars and all of these types of things to help with the bowling alley. So we have. A history of absolutely subsidizing our community halls, and I think that this is something that we really need to take a good consideration. And I look forward to having more discussion about it at budget and finance.
Yeah. We do have a new appointment uh. It within administration uh with facilities manager and. And whatever, I think what I think what they really need is some assistance and guidance, uh because I don't have. I felt a little uncomfortable with some of the things that their consultant was telling them. Uh, and I I don't think. I think that to that to the information that they provided for us is pretty skinny. Uh, I I I think we should try to assist them in some way with a partial grant and may maybe a loan. Or something along that line, but I think we need to have in good information because. I'm not even sure whether they have air conditioning or don't have air conditioning. You know, uh, and we can't make decisions based on that. We do have someone in place that we can. And and we can assist them and 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 come back with with the accurate information and and deal with this at a later at our next meeting. Other comments at the table, Councilman's?
I don't I don't know if we have a person in place yet. Or.
Not the CEO shaking his head. We don't have someone yet.
But but I but I I do agree. I think they do need some some better uh advice on possibly. Where they're going lately or what they're what they're needing to provide. And and uh I'm with concert wall look of more quotes, like like to give us some better understanding of where you're going.
I'm sure Cromwell. That's Captain made the motion, so she'll get the final word. I um. You know, appreciate the value that the community hall societies bring to the to the region and the work that all the volunteers do to. To keep those uh buildings and and uh connections for the community in place and viable. This is a significant amount of money and and I, like colleagues, found the presentation severely wanting for details. Um, you know, we're at one point talking about radiators along the wall. The quote talks about. Uh, forced air. They've got some degree of forced air with air conditioning. So is there the possibility to? You know, connect those systems, and that isn't our job to figure out for them. The I my expectation is that someone asking for eighty thousand dollars from the county should have a clear plan. Of what they need to start with with multiple quotes and a plan for what's happening. And so. I like moving it forward, but I also think we don't have enough um. Information and even, you know, in terms of the financial statements, we've not seen financial statements for an organization that's asking for us to give them nearly eighty thousand dollars. It seems to me that it would be reasonable to look at that because there appears to have been money for any number of other projects. So it makes me wonder where the heat fits in the priority list. And then heat plus air conditioning brings up, you know, do we, if the real core need is heat, then let's talk about heat. But there's this, I you know, top ups added on that I'm not sure. Is uh is reasonable. I also kind of wonder a little bit about what other alternatives have been investigated like thi- this. To me, for that group seems like an opportunity to make a generational difference for the society. Have they looked at other other types of of heat generation, whether it's ground source heat pumps or air source heat pumps? What what are the what are the choices that they can make and? In general, kind of underscores the value of the Fund for Energy Improvements established from the proceeds of the capital, I mean, the council approved recently. And I would propose to you that the funding guidelines there could even be, you know, a potential guide for something like this. The society has, for whatever reason, left us really quite late and. I don't think that that should cause us to rush into a decision on on such a significant um ask. I and regarding the policy that's been presented to us twenty six oh five. As I read the policy, I'm not convinced that that particular policy applies to this circumstance. This is a, this is a. A maintenance request, not a project. They're not building a new playground. They're not building a new hall, building a museum or. There it's it's deferred maintenance. And, you know, as a as a county, uh one of the things I hope we can do is is through our influence with the groups that we're connected to. Encourage them to to do the things that we're trying to do with the asset management planning and look to the long range and and trying to have a bit of a plan for. For how items like this are going to be saved because, you know, most of us expect furnace furnaces. Hot water tanks to to fail at some point and so this is a reasonably foreseeable problem and um. It's unfortunate that there's really no money set aside. So I I don't even, I guess I don't think that policy applies and. Um, we'll probably refer that to an RFD for your consideration at the uh policy review committee. Because on a hundred thousand dollars to ask for no information is not prudent or. Transparent and responsible use of the resources entrusted to us. So I support the motion, but I I have a lot of questions about the request. Councilor, you've been on the list already. Counselor Anderson, have you? Any comments? Counsel Cromwell, you said no, do you change your mind?
No, I just want to agree very much with what you're saying. I.
Could someone write that down?
It's already in my calendar. The community halls are very important. However, there was too much information that. Was contradictory in that presentation. I found it very wanting as a good word. And definitely need more information before I can get behind a donation of that of that amount. When there are other projects within the county that could easily use that funding as well. And look forward to more information coming.
Do we need to on this or can we just, because we're moving it on, there'll be lots of time to discuss it later. Counselors uh Wallack and Chamsak, you're good. Counselor Capitanic, any closing remarks?
Closing remarks, yes. Um, uh, to be cautious that we don't become reviewers of presentations. Uh, you know, not everyone has the gift of public speaking like some of us do. But I do feel that what uh Council Gerlock was said was very important for us to get this information. We need to consider offering them help to get it. Um, this is. This is a not something that I'm comfortable just uh dropping on. On the presenter's um lap and expecting that they're going to come back with three quotes. One of the things that um Mrs. Donald mentioned was. You can, and we've seen, you can put something out for tender and you can't make people want to take the job. So if they do it again, that would be great, uh but maybe we have resources that can help them. Reach out to other companies or maybe in even other areas like Lacklubish or Slave Lake. Um, I don't know what that looks like, and I think I want to leave that in administration's hands, but perhaps um. Uh, with the directors or the CEO's blessing. If you have questions that you want answered, we should have them uh. Collected and and be in like one presentation or one one letter. If that is. That's pattern. My thoughts going not like nine of us going and asking a question here and a question there. So. I'm not sure what uh council would like to do to recommend that in the motion to say. Do we want to have a date to which we could have all our questions to administration by?
So you I, yeah, so there is a motion on the floor to refer to budget and finance.
I have our questions answered. Budget and finance.
Would it be reasonable for council to just uh all email your questions regarding this to Director Whaley?
Is that reasonable?
She can aggregate them because there will be. Uh, from the nine of us around the room, there's, you know, things that have been common themes so that you can kind of bring that clarification to the budget and finance meeting.
I can't see her face. It's okay, just I don't know if she's saying yes or no.
She's nodding.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, so I don't know if we need that in the motion, but uh.
Does everybody feel that's just a reasonable direction to share? Do you want a motion for it, Councilor Holland? Do you want to speak?
I I think it's great um to share that information, but if we could just make sure everybody's included in everybody's email, so we're not all sending. We're gonna miss mainly the same questions that we can kind of compile them into, make sure that we're not repetitive.
I'd rather just send them to her. Send us one email because I don't want two hundred.
I don't want to be copied on all the emails either. I think you can do whatever you like, but uh yeah, just send your questions to the director and then hopefully. Uh, we can leave it in in her capable hands to get us is what answers can be had before our next budget and finance meeting.
Okay, on the question of the adoption of the motion to uh for this. Uh, forward the request for uh funding to the budget from the Amber Valley Community Hall. Sorry, from the Amber Valley Community Association to the next budget and finance committee meeting for consideration, all those in favor.
I.
That is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. And Director Whaley, our council, where everybody's under the understanding, will send. Emails with the kind of additional stuff you want to know for. Can compilation by uh the director and you can maybe give everybody a copy at the end.
Is um with permission, uh Reven Council. Uh, this information you'd like back at your next budget and finance committee is just the correlation of the stuff we need to get together for what they need to be looking for. Because if you want quotes by the twenty ninth of September, we may be pushing it reaching outside of the area. So and an agenda in advance of that.
If council can get this to you by the end of the week, which is probably not unreasonable. It's Tuesday. We've questions are fresh in our mind.
That would be very helpful.
Pass it on to the group to say, here are the things council was wondering. They're taking it to talk about a budget and finance on the twenty ninth. And. From my perspective, it's up to them, you know, if if they can get most of it to us for consideration, great. If if none of it comes in by the twenty ninth, it just. Defers the discussion later into the budget process and and into the season, and it sounds like there's certainly some urgency to um. To the request. Okay, that's seven point four. Um, lunch is on the table. Do we want to take twenty minutes today? We can probably be, there's not a lot left on the agenda. And be out early, early this afternoon. So back at quarter twelve fifteen.
Hey, I'm going to be uh leaving and driving to another location and I'll be zooming in on my phone. After lunch, just so council knows, I won't have the full beautiful screen of all of you. I don't think, but um I'll do my best to uh. Be loud and clear because I won't have this headset either. Have a good lunch.
We'll see you twelve fifteen.
Do I will do my best. All right, bye.
So proposing to try to move the
since I'm up, we have a multiplex meeting for nine thirty AM. And at the request of admin, I would like to bring up the topic of cancelling the September twenty sixth Budget and Finance Meeting and moving it forward. Um, so that all the information can be prepared that we are requesting. And any more than anyone else has to request. The proposed date would be October twelfth, but we had a lot of fun trying to do this last time, so.
So proposing to try to move the twenty budget and finance on the twenty sixth to October twelfth. Is there anybody that that's a problem for?
Um, yes, actually a couple of things. I know I'm not available on the twelfth, but as well as we're pushing these dates out, that pushes out the issues at Amber Valley Hall, we'll have to be waiting for getting closer and closer to that cold uh, weather that I, I just don't think that that would work very well for them. Is administration.
I'd like to, well, the concern that I've been talking to our CEO about, and he can elaborate if you like, is that we don't have enough compiled to have a whole meeting on the twenty sixth. And that there will be more information that will be coming that takes us closer to that. Well, the date that I suggested of the twelfth. And so there would be, there would be no reason to have a meeting on the twenty sixth anyway. And so we're just really trying to rebook a meeting so that we can have more information and less. All of a sudden you had a whole bunch of information they could get right away on different topics. We don't have enough to have a full meeting on the twenty-sixth.
Okay, so we're going to cancel the twenty-sixth?
Is that inaccurate for administration? I'm sorry.
And as the chair, are you then proposing to?
I was proposing the twelfth, but I'm open to a bit of discussion. Um, the thirteenth is available as well, I believe, and, uh. Um, I don't know.
Eleven, eleven. What other dates? Thirteenth doesn't work. Twelfth is inconvenient.
Um, the nineteenth? I, I don't have the other talent. Oh, sorry, that you're at a conference. There's a conference that isn't there.
Uh, uh, I'm sorry, but Chair.
Yeah.
Was interrupted when I asked a question, um, of administration. And that question, that question was, is the twenty-sixth not difficult to?
That's, yes.
In terms of the matters that were referred to Budget and Finance Committee, we won't have the answers back before you. I'm picking particularly Amber Valley Hall because if we get in touch with them today. And we've got a list of a couple other, uh, companies that they can contact to invite the bids from. By the time they contact those companies and get those quotes back from them and give them back to us. I, we're not going to make the, the September twenty-sixth, uh, meeting.
Thank you.
How's October sixth out? Well, how long does the Regional Water Commission usually take?
About half the day.
What about the fifth?
Uh, Met Power up north.
Good. You, eleven, October eleventh?
Um, no, I can't do the eleventh either. Who's that? Who's the co-chair on this? I can't remember. Oh, Ashton, you might have to take this one.
My preference would be the twelfth, sorry, um, simply because the, our new C E O starts the week before. And I'd want him to be here at least a week before we throw him into a budget meeting.
Yeah.
So I don't think that would be fair to try and book at the fifth or the fourth. It would. I think the twelfth would be the fairest date.
Council Hall?
Is the eleventh not available?
Love it for the chair.
I understand, but she mentioned that the co-chair could take this one.
I'm okay with that. If, if, if all other eight councils are available on the eleventh, I won't be the only one to change that. But, because I can see already we have two or three that weren't available on the twelfth.
Just, just one available. I think we have one avail- not available on the twelfth and one not available on the eleven. Budget meetings at the call of the chair and, um, it's, I would defer to your judgment. If you want to call it for the eleventh and arrange the vice chair to handle it, that's, I respect that. And if you want to call it on the twelfth, I'll make sure my schedule works to attend.
I would like to call it on the twelfth.
Okay.
Nine thirty A M.
Any other, uh, meeting with Council Capitanic?
Uh, that was all I had on my list.
Counselor, uh, Chamsak, your hand is up.
Um, I think I've caught just about everything except for October sixteenth F C S S with. For Gerlach at night.
F C S S on sixteen?
Yes.
Okay, at nine thirty or something, ten. Here, and you've got that, Ms. Green? It's called calling before yours.
Thank you. The September twenty-second Trails, uh, meeting will be, um, changed. The date has not been, as far as I understand, has not been, uh, confirmed yet, so the twenty-second no longer is the Trails. Um, cancelled. The, there is though, um, an event happening in town, the Run for Life and Suicide Prevention. Barbecue and fundraiser that's happening up at the Athabasca University between eleven thirty A M and two P M on the twenty-second. Um, that I think will be in a really important event to attend. As well as the Athabasca Recreational Trails Association is also holding, holding a meeting at the New Pine Creek Call. One P M on the twenty-fourth and of course all new members are welcome.
So one P M is a Trails meeting on the twenty-fourth. That's a Sunday. Athabasca Record, that's September twenty-fourth. Okay. Ms. Green, you got Athabasca Recreational Trails Association at one P M on the twenty-fourth. The other one is good to know. I don't think it qualifies to be on the council calendar. Uh, Counselor Wallet, did you wave? Oh, Counselor Minz? Counselor Erlich, Counselor Anderson, anything else?
Um, I'll refer to the C E O, but I believe there's a. Issue with the October seventeenth Committee of the Whole Meeting date?
That is correct, yes. We have all of our senior staff attending I C S two hundred training on the sixteenth and seventeenth. So certainly, uh, following the Ag Service Board meeting on the eighteenth. If that would work in terms of Committee of the Whole or the following week.
Is there nothing available on the nineteenth?
Uh, nineteenth would be fine, but, uh, I see there's two people away at the A S V A Conference in Edmonton.
Um. Uh, well, the twenty-fourth doesn't make a lot of, we tried to not have them the same week as council meetings, right? Because if we refer anything to council, there's no time to get that on the agenda. Um, so I would move to schedule it after A S B on the eighteenth.
On the eighteenth, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, so just in terms of a time in this chair. If we said eleven. That word, because I.
Oh, oh, made an error. I admit it. You have to correct this. I've just been advised the I C S two hundred is the seventeenth and the eighteenth.
Uh, there's a multiplex meeting on the sixteenth.
What about at one o'clock on the sixteenth? Multiplex be over by then? This starts at ten. Is it going all day?
If you're on the other day available, it would be the. Yeah, either the eleventh or the thirteen. The eleventh's the day after council, so that doesn't really.
But they're separate. Yeah. Too long, eight in a row. You're the chair.
Can we, can we tentatively move that Committee of the Whole meeting to the eleventh?
Yes.
And then if we have to change something after on.
So Committee of the Whole to the eleventh, nine thirty. Any further changes or amendments?
Mister Reeve, just to draw to your attention. Administration has contacted the four Western Summer Villages. For a proposed date of Friday the twenty-second, we have received responses from three or four summer villages. That that date would work for their councils and their C E Os.
Okay, that's up. Shall we plan it for that day?
Yes, we should, and we're waiting to hear back from the final summer village, but. Uh, we're hopeful that since the other three are available, that we would proceed.
And given that each council will have at least three people, I would suggest we move ahead. And hopefully one of the three of their counselors can, can make it, and if they can't. Uh, the twenty-second of September. They'd be at the Grossmont Hall, I think.
That's correct.
What time?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's, uh, the Friday, the twenty-second of September at the Grossmont Hall.
At what time?
Uh, seven?
I thought it was six.
Six?
Yeah, put six in, but we'll update, I'll have the correct information when Leah gets back.
And we had briefly already talked kind of about the tentative.
The agenda and the stuff, yeah.
Good on that.
There's five or six items.
Yeah, I think it's, a lot of it is keep it short and sweet. Are there, um. Any other additions, amendments, or changes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Counselor Chamsak has made a motion to approve the agenda, or sorry, to approve the calendars. As amended, all those in favor?
Aye.
That is eight and zero and the motion is adopted. We are at item ten point one H, Counselor Hall, for yours.
Thank you. Um, just a quick update. We're, again, we haven't had a meeting in some time. It's upcoming, but just a quick update to, um. Let everyone know that the cleanup along the trail for garbage, more garbage removal, more tree removal. And that kind of thing has taken place between, uh, Collington all the way to the bridge. That is out in the town jurisdiction portion, that bridge that is out. Um, there is a way lower down, um, that people can detour around it, so it doesn't need to be closed. However, the bridge is, the discussion that's taking place is to have it removed completely. Because of the, um, hazardous condition that it currently is in, and then a, a proper detour and, and planning, uh, going on that. Um, and just, you know, I'm anxious to get the signs, of course, the waypoints and whatnot, um, all need to be submitted. Uh, to TransCanada Trail to, for the new signs, because we did have a couple of hikers unfortunately that went left that could have, should have gone right. And so, but they managed to find their way back to the trail, which was great, but, um, that signage would, it would be really beneficial. And as well to also mention, um, that the trail is gaining more and more, uh, users and travelers there. Uh, this past, yesterday, I guess it was, four cyclists have gone through from Edmonton. They've managed to make it all the way through pretty much to Minook now, um. And I heard, uh, the reports coming back is that it's a beautiful and lovely trail. So it's really good to hear that, that it's getting more and more use. So just wanted to provide that good news update.
Okay, ten point one S, that's also you.
Thank you. Um, and just on, uh, more for administration, so through the chair to administration. Um, if we have an update on, uh, the requests for the Summer Villages, um, invitations that went out. As well as the grant application for the Rural Transit Solutions Fund.
Mister Reeve, to, uh, to Chair to all councils. There was a response from one of the C E Os, uh, Kim Bancroft, asking on behalf of Ford, the Summer Villages for some details. There was a, a fairly lengthy detailed email that was sent back. I've not received any response back since that particular time. Yeah.
We are at ten point one U, uh, Counselor Chamsak.
I'm going to apologize for advance, a little bit lengthier, uh, report. Uh, we had our meeting yesterday for F C S S and the manager of F C S, Debbie Woods. Presented the Understanding and Responding to the Challenges Faced by F C S Programs. In Rural Alberta Report Provided from R M A and the University of Alberta. At this time, there's no need for resolution from Athabasca County. Ms. Woods. Actively involved in the process and study and very much an advocate and leader in the voice for F C S S in the Athabasca region. Uh, Ms. Woods, as you know, sits on many boards provincially and regionally and has solid relationships with her M L As. Some of the upcoming projects coming to Athabasca is a social impacts lab. Funding to, uh, may come provincially through United Way. Mentorship program is also seeking sponsorships to help fund the project. Maintaining mentors for grades three and four. Contact Amanda Potts for more details. And our family liaison workers came to the board with the presentation of the work that they do with the youth in our areas. Areas of focus include, um, working with struggling students from K to twelve that are dealing with issues of self-esteem loss. Control, eating emotions, grief. And these ladies work hard on programs, proven programs such as Go Zen, Emotional A B Cs, Everyday Speech. And of course the resources from workshops and books while still addressing the social concerns such as relationship building. Behavioral concerns with the partnerships with Aspen View. They are also so affected that effective. The program that, uh, needing to stay within the F C S S mandate of prevention. That about one-third of the students also choose support services even through the summer. That's pretty much the fine work of F C S S and the F C S S board will be providing the minutes as soon as they're concluded A S A P.
Thank you. It would be in order to receive a motion to accept the, uh, reports from ten point one H S and U for information. Counselor Chamsak has moved. Absolutely, we could have a discussion on that idea and add some comments.
I would like, I would like the council to consider adding on.
I would like you to provide me with a reminder. At the F C S S meeting, we had the family liaison, uh, coordinators in there, and that is. A vitally important, uh, sector of, of what F C S S does. And is, it's been extremely successful at this point. And the only problem is that the program is not large enough. Uh, they have two. They have two, uh, people who are working at it, and there really should be three. And, uh, that would require some additional money from the county. I'm just wondering if we could add that to a consideration at our budget and finance meeting, whether or not. We can say, are we clear to, to, uh, help increase that program a little bit, because I think it's vitally important. Um. It seems to me that that would be a very reasonable thing to just bring up at that budget and finance meeting and, and. Uh, advance that at that.
Forward.
Forward. Notice of motion. Thanks for speaking so highly of the program. Um, Counselor Chamsak, you had your hand up again, was I? On the question of the adoption of the motion to accept for information reports, ten point one H S and U, all those in favor?
Aye.
That is eight and zero and the motion is adopted. It would be in order to receive a motion to enter closed session. Counselor Minz has moved. We enter closed session. All those in favor? That is adopted eight and zero. Did you send this to, uh, Counselor Capitanic?
Uh, this was part of the.